Good evening. And I'll call to order the town council meeting of Monday, November 7th, 2022 at 7:00 PM here in the McKinnon Council chambers. Relative to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is roll call. Roll call, we're going to roll call. Item number two, roll call.
Am I supposed to do that?
Yes.
Oh. Counselor Adams?
Present.
Daniel?
Present.
Dow? Did I pronounce that right? Okay. Lazo?
Present.
Marquetti?
Present.
Martin Yi?
Present.
Rivas?
Present.
And Steves?
Present. Okay, Counselor Ryan is excused.
Counselor Ryan is excused.
Agenda item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, October 17th, 2022. Are there any corrections, deletions, substitutions? Counselor Steves?
Just one thing, under the citizens forum, it should be S-O-L-I-N-S-Q-Y. Item number nine.
That's right. Any other additions, changes, deletions? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number four, sub community reports. First, we'll go with general government. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items number 21, 22, and 23 were on agenda, on our agenda, so we'll get to that when we get there. We also discussed a plan for, from the sewer, sorry, the water department about creating a, come on, brain, a revolving fund so that they can use, so that they can use the money to go after invasive plants, and that's still in process. And we also talked again briefly about the, about the issues surrounding the, our drone policy, not the bylaw, because remember the, remember when we had the original vote up here at the council, we said that we had to, we had to approve a policy or they can't use the drone. And there's some dispute with the, as the manager has pointed out on a few occasions, that may also conflict with the charter's authority for the manager. So, we've got to figure out what we're doing with that. We haven't done that yet. And we do not have a meeting scheduled, so that's it for the morning.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW met tonight before the council meeting. In attendance were Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Steves, Counselor Dow, assistant members Kevin Splain and Steve Lazo. The following agendas are on tonight's meeting, were discussed. Agenda number 18, voted to approve the DPW request to declare surplus items. Agenda item number 19, vote to transfer $150 for increased sewer testing fees. Agenda item number 20, vote to transfer $272.20 from DPW's ride share surcharge to DPW roads material. And agenda item number 24, vote to confirm town managers appointment of tie-in bond, VHB, Haley Ward, and CHC as interim engineers for on-call services. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education services, Counselor Ryan is excused. We'll move on to planning and development. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on November 2nd. Agenda items number nine through 11 and 13 through 17 are tonight's agenda. That's all I have. We'll discuss it when we get to that point. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And protection of persons and property, Counselor Lazo.
To and through the Chair, thank you. No report at this time, but we have a meeting scheduled Wednesday, the 9th, at 6:00. Thank you.
Very good. Under Chairman's announcements, I'd like to announce that we have a new recording clock. My name is Sue Pagini, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Very good. I'd like to thank Max Golicson for all the work that he did in helping out, pitching in in between for the last few weeks. He went above and beyond, and I definitely appreciate the work that he did. So, thank you, Max. Item number six, town managers' announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to you, to members of the council, the audience here in the chambers, as well as those watching from home. Couple of quick announcements. Since we last met, we did receive some information acknowledging our success with the One-Stop for Growth Grant Program. We received growth, a grant for the Urban Agenda, and I should apologize, I have a bad cold and I keep, my voice goes out intermittently here, so. We received $75,000 for the Urban Agenda grant for the mural and concerts in the Central Square parking lot. We also were awarded $885,000 in support of the East Main Street Infrastructure and Safety project that's going on near Case Street. That's part of a Mass Works grant. We also received technical assistance to complete a Phase II environmental assessment in the area of 31 Mill Street from the Brownfields grant. Tonight, you will see that we were coming forward. Hopefully, we've reached an agreement with all of our unions at this point. We've already wrapped up three. The fourth one is here this evening. You also have something on executive session. We're moving forward with the fire station. I want to point out that as of November 1st, as we previously indicated, mattresses and textiles are no longer allowed in our trash. If you go to our website, you can find information. Similarly, as of November 1st, National Grid raised their rates. We did put some information up on the homepage under news flashes, how you could find some information about those rate changes, as well as potential interest, excuse me, ways to get assistance with those. I've been asked by the DPW to remind folks not to blow their leaves into the streets. There's a lot of leaves out there, and they would appreciate if you did not do that. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank some of my staff. It started with our finance team. We were notified recently by a government agency that has three letters that we were not in compliance with some of our benefits and insurance offerings back in 2019. So, our finance team met to look at this, and I wanted to thank our Assistant Town Manager, HR Director Adriana Rubena. She did the yeoman's portion of the work. She went back through our payroll and benefits records, through munis, and through our prior system, KBS, and in her efforts have saved the town almost $70,000 in fines that came in from that government agency. So, you know, we have some great people here working to correct some of the problems that we're finding on a regular basis that have been here for a while, so we'll continue to work forward on that. I've also received information from Southbridge Water, to water takers both in Southbridge and Charlton. Southbridge Water Department will not be doing their semi-annual hydrant flushing due to the current reservoir levels related to the drought. The Water Department will instead be doing spot flushing throughout the town, starting this past weekend at approximately 9:00 PM, and continue during overnight hours for approximately six to eight weeks between the hours of 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. During this time, the Water Department requests that customers periodically check their water before washing clothes. Customers may get accumulated sediment in their house laterals and experience some discolored water. This water will clear after a brief run of the tap. If you have any questions, please call Southbridge Water. They are doing this out of an abundant caution. We do not have very low levels in our reservoir, but they're slightly off from our historic levels, so there's, there's not a concern, but as I said, they're not going to just run the hydrants at this point in time. Lastly, through the town clerk's office, I want to remind everyone that the polls are open tomorrow from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the community center, and encourage everyone to go out and vote. And those are my announcements so far this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Agenda item number seven, presentations. We have two presentations this evening. The first presentation is from the Veterans Council of Southbridge Initiative, and that's an update, and Counselor Adams will make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the councilors, town manager, residents of our community. As per our agenda, our motion that we made five, almost a year and a half ago, I'm debrief you every six months, once in May, and once in November of our uptakes, or our updates on the initiative, one at Dresser Street Park, and the other one over at the World War I, or World War Memorial Park right by the fire station. So, I want to concentrate today. First, I want to thank you as the President of the Veterans Council for voting in favor of the $50,000 grant from the state and accepting that in. That put us way over the edge when it came to finishing that park up, being able to finish up the complete design and actually the construction as well. Just an update, scope of work has been completed on the World War Memorial Park. That is done. It is also out for bid at this point in time by state law. We have, I think it's a two-week period. Once the architect went in, did the scope of work, town manager kindly went ahead and put it out for bid for two weeks. On the 16th is when the bids will be revealed or opened back up, and then we'll have an idea what we're looking at as far as the cost for the first phase. One of the questions that we had with the, one of the lawyers was, is this a one-phase approach or is this multiple phases? So, this has always been multiple phases. We wanted to make sure we got rid of the old slate, the non-compliant ADA, non-ADA compliant benches, tables, and all that kind of stuff, and we want to get that cement poured as soon as possible and stamped. So, we're waiting for the bids to come out, or to finalize, and then we should be well on our way. With that park, in the spring, you start seeing work being done with the pole, the flagpole, the benches, the lights, the neighborhood monuments, the monuments, the Franco-American monument being placed over there along with cameras and a few other things. When it comes to finances, we are on our, again, we are still on our second phase of the financing. That's about $1.2 million. Right now, we're reaching out to large foundations and a few other people for donations, so that is well underway. And I just ordered, as a lot of councilors have already received, and some residents have already bought, we have the challenge coins. That's the, we have ordered the second phase of the challenge coins. This is with the GAR monument. The first one was with the Hiker monument, so we should get those by the 15th of November. And lastly, I'll mention again during council's forum, we have the Veterans Day ceremony going on at 11 o'clock on Friday at the World War Memorial Park. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Just questions.
Thank you. The second presentation this evening is from the Family Health Center of Worcester-Southbridge. We're here to get an update from Mr. Lou Brady of Family Health. Welcome, Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Daniels. I appreciate the invite. And to you, Town Manager, call, I appreciate the invite. Of course, my friend and colleague, Dave Adams. I am here tonight on behalf of the Family Health Center of Worcester. I am Lou Brady. I'm the president and CEO. Have been such since March of 2019, actually, April of 2019. And my immediate past predecessor, Fran Anthony's, is here. She's retired, but she is here to offer some perspective on how hard we fought to be here. And I will offer my perspective on how hard we will fight to be a part of Southbridge's future. We have, as a health center, been operating for 50 years, and it's always been a difficult challenge. We have operated on a shoestring budget for a number of years. Of course, recent years have offered COVID as a challenge, and has offered a ransomware attack that occurred in October of 2020 that really put us in a very fragile position. Still, we prevailed. We worked hard to, to serve the communities that desperately need that, what we offer. When we experienced a very difficult financial hole in July of this past year, it's when we had to make some very hard choices as a health center. And one of those hard choices has impacted this community dramatically. We had to give up our leases at 32 Orchard and 29 Orchard, and that is effective. We will be pulling up from those operations December 1st of this year. However, we will never give up on our patients, and we will never give up on this community. I have three messages that I'm looking to deliver tonight. The first is that we are committed to ensuring our patients get what they need. The two providers, medical providers that were operating out of our location on Orchard Street have returned to our site on Queen Street in Worcester. We are committing publicly to ensure that any patient who needs to be seen will be given a ride to our operations at Queen Street. We are entering a relationship with Ride Health, which is a significant partner. They've worked with health systems all up and down the eastern seaboard, and they will be providing Uber rides to, excuse me, medical Uber rides to any patient, dental or medical, who needs to be seen at our Queen Street site. We have been outreaching to our 1,100 medical patients consistently over the last several weeks. 50% of our patients have already agreed that they will come to our site at Queen Street and will be seen by the providers that they're familiar with. 20% have said that they will seek a cure elsewhere. 30% are still in the process of, of being contacted or being outreach to or connecting with us. We have sent out letters. We have made phone calls. We have sent out five mass texts and emails. We won't stop until we reach everyone and each one of those patients knows that they have an option for being seen. We, we want to see the patients. The second message that I want to deliver tonight is that we want to improve our communications. Since our struggles have become public, we have been working very hard to get our neck above the waterline. We're now at a place where we've stopped sinking, and we are treading water, and we're bringing on friends and supporters who are helping us to get to shore. Part of what's been sacrificed in all of that, and what was sacrificed frankly beforehand, was communication. And I need to own that, and I need to do a much better job on behalf of my organization to improve our communication. And so, I'm here to make a public commitment that we want a Southbridge voice on our board. Our board, by law, is 50% or more our patients. We want to have a Southbridge patient on our board, and we want to have a prominent Southbridge voice on our board, so that as we are making decisions into the future, the Southbridge voice is being heard and being considered and factored into our decision-making. And my third message tonight is that we will rebuild. I was a child who got his care at a community health center when I was young. My mom and dad, they immigrated from the West Indies in the 60s during a time when this country was a little bit hostile to immigrants, and we needed a break, and the break that I got was getting my care at a community health center. So, I know how important this is, what it can mean for the trajectory of a life. One of my mentors in this, in this world of community health centers has an expression, and that expression is, "What the eye sees, the heart feels." And what he meant by that was, the physical space, the care environment is almost as important as the caregiver. If you walk into a place and you see a light bulb on a string, or a green couch with stuffing coming out of it, you don't feel that respect. You don't feel the dignity. You're not feeling like you are, are being supported. If you come to our site at 26 Queen Street, you would feel that level of respect and that dignity. If you come to our sites at Orchard Street, I'm afraid to say you would not. I don't want to put my name on that. That was always meant to be an interim solution that we've never quite got right. We will get this right. So, with that, I'd like to invite my colleague Fran Anthony's up, and she will share a little bit of our history of coming to Southbridge, and then I would be happy to entertain a question.
Thank you. Francis Anthony's, I live in Worcester, and I served as the CEO of Family Health Center of Worcester for a good long period of time, until March of 2019, when I retired and Lou was hired. During that time, there were a couple of things that became really clear at Family Health. One, it was that we had a lot of patients who came in from Southbridge, two, 26 Queen Street, our site in Worcester, and often those folks had a hard time getting there. I mean, we all know the public transportation between Southbridge and Worcester is limited. And if you don't have a car, and you don't have a ride, it was often very difficult for folks to get into our site. And the people who were coming in from Southbridge would tell us that. So, that was one piece that became apparent really early on. And then, I was just talking to the person sitting next to me from Harrington about when I remember first having conversations about doing some community health center work here in Southbridge. And I actually came to this room, met with the town manager at the time, and came in conjunction with the U Inc. program. And both the U Inc. Behavioral Health Program and Family Health were being asked to do a school-based health center. Now, we do school-based health centers in Worcester, have done them since the 90s, and we had some real experience at what it would take to provide healthcare services to students in the middle of a school day. And U Inc. was going to do behavioral health piece, and Family Health was going to do the medical piece. That, all those conversations always take a bit of time to make real, but it was complicated by the fact that there were some issues with the school system, and the school system really didn't have time to put any attention at that point into the idea of a new service, which would be healthcare in the schools. I remember talking, and again, I shared with my, the colleague sitting next to me. We had conversations with the previous executive director of the hospital, Dick Manchin, before Ed Moore was here, and by comparing when Ed Moore got here, which was 2007, according to my colleague, I know that those conversations were before that. I think it was around 2005 when we had those first conversations. In the meantime, we began to work with the community groups here. We participated in the CHNA, the Community Health Needs Assessment Process. There were door-to-door surveys done in terms of whether people were getting the care that they needed, both in terms of medical care and dental care. And frankly, at some of those hearings and some of those door knocking, dental care was rated as even more important than medical care. And that's partially because you have Harrington here providing at least emergency room care, and often, primary care and specialized care, depending on how people accessed it. We went through the process, and it's a sticky federal process, of applying for what was called a new access point. And in that period of time, you do a lot of homework in terms of what the community needs are. So, you look at everything from the poverty rate, and the unemployment rate, and the demographic mix of a community, and who seems to be getting medical care and who isn't. You put all those things together for a federal grant. It gets submitted, and in the meantime, you are doing a lot of work looking for a site. And we spent a long time in terms of the organization of family health, looking at sites. So, I have been through many older, unused homes in the area. I have been through the American Optical Campus. I have been through the Center of Hope. I've been through a variety of things where we were looking for potential spots. And we were looking for it kind of in the context of that federal grant process. The federal grant process finished. We were told we did not get the federal grant, and that was a disappointment. We let people in Southbridge knew that that was not going to be the way we got the health center started. Very disappointing. And then, we got a second information from the federal government saying, "We took you off the waiting list, and you are funded, and you have 90 days in which to get the services started." So, we went from, we had said no. I mean, we had another site selected. We had told all the people that we were involved with in terms of potential landlords that we did not get the grant, and then several months later, we got the grant, and we had a very limited time in which we were supposed to start services. So, we looked at what else was available in town. Some of you may remember that. Some of you were involved in that. We looked at what was available in town at that point, and that's where we came to the two houses that are literally across the street from each other on Orchard Street. It was always, I think, when we opened our doors, perceived as interim. We, over the years, got additional resources so that we could really make dental work better, and that was particularly true, not only because of the Southbridge need, but also because of the pieces around infection control, which are really, really important in a dental operatory. So, we got some renovations. I know that the congressman was involved in that, and we were able to really build out a nice dental facility. The medical facility across the way was always a little bit more difficult. It was smaller, the holes were narrow, it was cramped. Frankly, the, there was available space on the second floor, but it didn't meet ADA requirements, and it was impossible to pull, to put in an elevator. So, the space on the medical was always small, and frankly, because the space was so small, what we could provide and the services that we could provide were not only a little bit cramped and maybe not as desirable, as Lou just mentioned, but also, we couldn't expand to the extent that we would have liked because of the spaces. So, always in our mind was, we need to bring these two programs together. There's efficiencies, if you can have one check-in place, if you can have one person working on health insurance issues for both the medical and the dental. Always the thought was that those two sites needed to come together. Whether it was because of things that were going on in Southbridge or COVID, that never happened. And so, I think that when the Board of Directors and Lou came to the issues around financial constraints at this point, what probably came up fairly quickly in their discussion, and I'm not on the board, and I wasn't part of those discussions, was that the services that we were providing in Southbridge at this moment were not really the services that we had always hoped to provide. And while the commitment to providing care in Southbridge remains strong, one place to look at kind of the rebooting and rethinking is probably, can we make this work better if we were able to have a facility in which both medical and dental would be combined? I think there were probably other options open. We paid, again, going back to when we had 90 days to get things up and running, we paid what felt to me, as a healthcare provider, a very, well, a more expensive rent than I would have hoped in each of those houses, and yet, it wasn't fully adequate for the kind of care that we want to provide here. Can I answer any questions?
All right, we have, we have questions. All right. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Brady and all them to, for coming out here in the first place. Thank you so much. I know it's hard to be able to, you've gone in front of quite a few people here lately, and I'm pretty sure it's, sometimes it's painful, and I feel your pain. But, I asked for the, the update for the town, for the town hall, for the councilors, who didn't understand the dynamics of what was about to come towards Southbridge and the care of a lot of our residents here. And so, I didn't ask for this to be a public hearing. It was one of those things where I believe after not hearing much at all, that Southbridge was, when it came to the Family Health Center of Worcester, that it was over with, and it's time for us to move on and try to figure out how to help the residents and to rebuild some of the trust and confidence. So, I do have a letter from RMG, from the CEO or the owner, to read off, but I would open up the floor to any of the questions from other individuals. I do know Harrington Hospital representative, Dr. Powers, is here as well. I do know Harrington Hospital representative, Dr. Powers, is here as well. I didn't know if anybody else would like to speak on that or ask questions of the CEO. I understand this is a presentation, but this is such a dynamic within the town itself and not a burden. It's an influx, a large influx of individuals that could overwhelm the small systems that we do have here. So at that point, Mr. Chair, I'll pass it back on to the floor to be able to open it up.
Counselor Dow, then Counsel Steves, then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you for all these years. I have just a small question. What, I don't know if I heard correct. So is the issue financing or you need a better place? This is, I don't, I don't get it because you were saying something and another thing came up. So I just want to understand if the issue financing or the issue you're looking for bigger to provide everything in one place or, and why this has happened now, not in the past, all this year. You was okay serving town of Southbridge in two different buildings. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. So as you know, or as you may know, when you are operating on a limited income, the smallest thing can knock you off course. When you are, you know, having grown up in poverty, when something goes bad, you may not have the resources to address it. And it's not that you can't make good choices, it's that you don't have the choices. And that's part of what happened for us. We have, over a long period of time, operated paycheck to paycheck as a health center globally. We struggled to get through the last few years, especially around COVID. COVID had the impact of seeing our staff get recruited away by other larger health entities. People got burnt out and decided that they were going to move on. And so we had fewer providers to, fewer doctors or fewer staff to attend to the needs. We held on to the model that we had as best as we could, and it meant that we had the main operation in Worcester and we had a smaller operation out here in Southbridge. And our goal was to hold on as long as we could until we could build it to the right size. With two doctors in one house and a doctor and a hygienist, and a dentist and a hygienist in the other house, there was no margin for error. If somebody called out or if they were on an extended leave, it meant that we needed to have somebody come from Worcester to Southbridge to help manage the operation, to help see the patients. And that meant that we had to cancel patients in Worcester to see fewer patients in Southbridge, and that was a challenge. But we were committed to holding on until we could figure out. When frankly, things got very difficult in July and we saw that we were drowning, we said, "We are going to have to make some very hard choices." We have 30,000, 33,000 patients across the system, 1,100 patients here. We said, "We're going to need to pull back, regroup, and rebuild." And that's ultimately what got us here. Does that make sense? Am I, or do you need more? You're not quite aligned with me yet, so let me offer some more. If you think about how you're going to operate in any kind of a situation, let's say you want to move into a house, but the house isn't ready yet, and you say, "I'm going to move into a trailer while the house is getting, while we figure out how to get into the house." And you think, "I could stay in the trailer for six months." And then you find out, six years later, that you're still in the trailer. At some point, you say, "This isn't working, and I have to step back and come back in a new and different way." That's really essentially what's happened to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up on what you just said, actually. So if you're talking about regrouping and rebuilding or stepping back and coming back, have, do you, are you saying that you're going to go back to Queen Street for a while but while seeking space back in Southbridge to find someplace that you can actually do all of the services that the two of you have cited that you want to do in town in one location?
To do the operation in the way that this community deserves, it needs to be at least triple the size. You need to have at least six medical providers operating the service. You need to have a couple of dentists and a hygienist to make that work. You need to have your behavioral health people as part of the mix. You need to have your case management as part of the mix. And then if a doctor calls out, if a dentist calls out, you can still keep the operation going. You're sustainable. To make this work, though, we need to find a partner to help us with that. Our friends at Harrington Hospital are deeply committed to this community and are deeply committed to seeing the appropriate medical services here. They've, they are in conversation with us about options. I can't say that that will turn into something specific, but I can tell you that the commitment is there on our side and the commitment is there on their side. But yes, the goal is to, number one, make sure that no patient is left in the lurch. So anybody who's being seen here who needs a ride, we'll get them to Worcester. But ultimately, we want to come back and we want to rebuild in a way that, with a center that this community deserves.
So do you have a basic idea of a timeframe for doing that?
I don't have a basic idea of a timeframe. We didn't anticipate that we were going to be making this move for September 1st, and we're still frankly, working our way out of it. But the communication is ongoing. The communication is happening now. And I'd be happy to return to this body and give an update when we know more.
Okay.
And I would also say, having a Southbridge representative on the board will help to get that information filtering into this community and improve our communication with this community going forward.
Okay. And to follow up on that specific item, so how does somebody get, get involved in being on this board?
Certainly. So for a patient who'd be interested in being part of our board, they typically will tap their provider on the shoulder and say, "Hey, I would like to be a part of this." Since the beginning of the health center movement, it's been consumer-driven. The people who use the services are the people who are my boss. So they could simply let their provider know and we'll get them into the path for consideration. There's a, there's a nominating committee that will evaluate and look at their, their interest and look at their desire to do it, help explain what it looks like, and then give them a chance to, to be considered. For a non-consumer member, somebody who would be coming, who'd be a prominent member of the community, you know, folks could reach out to me. They could make their names known to the town manager. I'd be happy to connect with him and, and have conversations about who those individuals are as well.
Okay. And how many people are you actually seeking from Southbridge?
I would seek two.
Two. Okay. Okay. And the other question I had was, where'd it go? Oh, yeah. How do, what's the phone number for people to reach that Uber, the Uber service you serve?
So this will be through our, this will be triggered by our staff, so we'll be giving that, they can just call our main number.
Okay.
And, but our providers and our enabling staff will, will work to make sure that these folks are getting connected to the ride that they need.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
Hi. I also want to thank you all for joining us today. It is a really important topic, and it's an important part of our community. I do remember, I was a member of the CHNA at the time when the Family Health Center was coming in, and I remember all of the work that we did to, you know, get all of, get all of the information and get all of the surveys. And, and I remember how excited our residents were to have these services here. And I have to disagree a little bit about the care environment. While it is very important, the Family Health Center, the reason that people, yes, it is a cramped space. My mom is, is a patient there, and so I've been there many, many times. But the providers are who made people feel serviced and valued. And I worked very closely with the providers when I was the director of the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Program at UINC. And there was a vacuum before, and although Harrington does an amazing job, you know, they can't fulfill every need in the community. And the Family Health Center was that, you know, filling that gap in the needs that we had here. And as agencies in the community, we worked very closely. I remember the Family Health Center being part of our health fairs, connecting students who could not get STD testing and could go to the Family Health Center and get those services. So, and I did recently watch the hearing, the public hearing in Worcester, and, you know, I was saddened by how the providers were talking about their concerns. And my question, and I know I went on a little bit, but my question is, are the providers here in Southbridge, are they also gone at this point? You know, what is the status of the providers? And, and I know you mentioned that in the last few weeks, you were contacting patients, but my mom is one person who hasn't been notified. And, and I know that Counselor Adams has spoken to many, many others who haven't been notified. And so, you know, what, when did this plan begin? And so if you could answer those two questions, and then I have another question.
Sure. Yep. So, Mr. Rivas, one, thank you. Our providers are head and shoulders above. Dr. Sheila Abdullah is beloved in this community. She's a true caregiver, more than a doctor, a true caregiver. Brian Swaim, her colleague, you know, in that same, with that same DNA. Both Dr. Abdullah and Dr. Swaim are seeing patients at our site at Queen Street. And as I mentioned before, 50% of their patients have said, "We will come to Queen Street to see you." I'm saddened that we haven't connected with everyone. My information was that we have sent out five mass texts, that we have sent out letters. You know, we talked, we mentioned earlier about voting. I'm sure that when you're making that effort to get everybody out to vote, there's a lot of mail that comes back unopened. I'm not trying to make an excuse here. I'm acknowledging that mass outreach can have an impact on the aggregate and can fail in many specific cases, and so I want to make sure that we address that. We probably need to have another approach to this if, if we haven't caught everybody that, that we need to catch. Our providers have felt the same pain that I have, that our patients have, that our other leaders have, have felt around the hard choices that we've made. If I had a magic wand, I wouldn't have made those choices, but my magic wand doesn't have any power. Internally, we are having the hard conversations about how do we rebuild mutual trust and mutual confidence? How do we look clear-eyed at the hard things that have happened, at the, the things that frankly, maybe were mistakes in the execution, at the things that were really, really damaging? And how do we repair that and how do we move forward? We have a process internally that is helping to support that. You may have heard it referenced in the hearing that I was at the last time, and that is the 120-day Go Forward Plan called Better Together. And we named it Better Together because the health center movement started with people from the community, concerned citizens coming together and saying, "We can do better together." And fixing, what ails us, has to be an all-of-health-center approach, an all-of-health-center effort. And so, like a family, we've had the hard conversations. We've said the hard things to each other, and now we're working together to figure out, how do we fix it? Through this turnaround plan, through the work groups that are coming together, through the steering committee that's helping to lead this. And do we think that everything's going to be perfect at the end of 120 days? No, that's not possible. I think that's not realistic. Will we have real momentum and have made progress on healing the broken parts and rebuilding confidence and rebuilding faith in each other? I certainly hope so. Thank you for your question.
I have one more question through, through the chair. And I appreciate the 120-day plan that you spoke about. I did hear about it in the hearing. My other question is around, if in July was a point where you sort of, you know, this was, you saw this coming or the writing on the wall, what were the steps taken? And you talked about sort of like people living paycheck, paycheck to paycheck. I've been one of those people, so I get it. But as an individual, you know, living paycheck to paycheck, you formulate a plan. How am I going to get out of this? What am I going to do? What are the steps? You know, do I need a better job? Do I need, you know, to get a loan? What, what are the steps that I need to, to take? And as an organization, you have more of a responsibility because you are servicing over 1,600 people in our community. And so what were those steps and what was that plan? And how did you ask for, did you ask for help? Because in the hearing, you know, what I've heard is that no one knew about this and we didn't know about this. I, I'm in several coalitions here in the community that Family Health Center is part of, and we never heard anything about these struggles. And as a community, you know, we could have brought it to the town council, you know, even before I was a town counselor. We could have, you know, connected you in some way to some assistance to help you get through this so that our community would not be suffering at this point. So I, I'm very curious to know, what were the steps? Where did you reach out for help? And, yeah, if you could answer that.
It's, it's a great, great question. And I do acknowledge that we have a sacred responsibility to the communities that we serve, especially us in leadership. It's, it's larger than, than ourselves. And believe it or not, we did ask for help in several different arenas, and we've actually received help in several different arenas. And that help actually mitigated the impact of the hard choices that we had to make. I think top of that list is Secretary Sutter's, who was remarkable in support of our ask for advance on our billing to help us navigate what we anticipated would be a cash challenge going into the summer, given our historic dip. We received help from our economic care organization, Community Care Collaborative, and they took a number of extraordinary steps to provide us with financial support, technical support, et cetera. We've reached out to the Mass League, which is our industry trade association, and they've provided us with technical support, additional support. We have been well-supported by our delegation in some specific We have been well-supported by our delegation in some specific asks, in asks to help us with our conversations with UMass Memorial Health Care, and asks related to our specific earmark ask, the Economic Development Bill. Language was put in to help us with our refugee program in the amount of 250,000. We're grateful for all of that. At the end of the day, the organization itself has to be able to stand up on its own in some respects. There's a certain amount of support that can help move things along, can help keep people going. But that support is like kindling. It gets the fire started, and you have to have enough of a base to keep the fire going. And frankly, we didn't have enough of a base. What's the plan going forward? It's really making those decisions that have us have enough of a base. To ask for the kindling to help us get that part of the fire started. But we've got to have a, a strong underlying infrastructure. Because subsidies end, and administrations change, and funding environments will shift based on recession and based on tax base, et cetera. So our commitment is to get ourselves strong, to reach out, to get help, to set us up to get strong, but to ultimately land in a place where we can largely operate on the, the underlying operations.
Thank you.
Counselor Mark Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I wasn't even aware of this Family Health Center until Counselor Adams brought it up. And a couple of questions, I don't really understand is, is first of all, who uses your service? Are they predominantly poor people, people without insurance, people of color? Who uses Family Health Center?
Family Health Center is for anyone and everyone, regardless of their ability to pay, regardless of their status, citizenship status, regardless of, of who they are. We look after the least, the lost, and the left behind. But anybody who is in need can walk in and they can get what, what they need in terms of, not just access to medical care, but all the things that impact them in between the visits. Community health centers were started 50 years ago with the recognition that you couldn't just bring people into a care site, give them a vaccination, a Band-Aid, a prescription, and then send them back out into the conditions that made them ill. And so we think about the patient, the citizen, the resident holistically. And I think in addition to, you know, the access and making sure that people have insurance and making sure that people get navigated through the system, what's most critically important is, is a feeling of belonging. My father, he, he came from Jamaica, as I said, in the early 60s. He never saw a doctor until he was 78 years old, because he just didn't trust anybody. Because he had had enough evidence that society could be cruel and he could be taken advantage of. The reason I do this is because everybody that I see coming in the door is my father, is my cousin, is my auntie, is my sister. And I wanted people to feel that they have a place of belonging, that we care about them, that it's not just about that moment in time, but like I said, the space in between the visits, and that at the end of their time with us, their trajectory puts them in a whole different place. And instead of being in a place of illness, they're in a place of wellness because of the caring interventions that happened in between.
So someone with healthcare can use your service as well as someone without healthcare, correct?
That's right.
And I thought in, in the state of Massachusetts, you had to have healthcare. And if you don't have it, you have, it's the law that you have to have healthcare.
Right. So there is a requirement. However, I can tell you that there are people who fall through the cracks. You know, the largest percentage of our patients are on Medicaid, quite frankly. And there are needs beyond just what your insurance company, insurance card will offer you. One of the most painful elements of the hard choices that we made was a furlough of our interpreter corps. We have an interpreter team of 12, and we furloughed them for 12 weeks. Fortunately, the city of Worcester stepped forward, and Mayor Petty and City Manager Batista stepped forward on behalf of the city council and offered funds to allow us to bring that interpreter team back early. So they were out for two weeks instead of 12 weeks. Because those, those interpreters were a bridge. For many of the patients who come to us, and we serve in 55 different languages, they can have a Medicaid card and not get what they need because they don't know how to navigate, or they don't feel like they can trust where they're going to get navigated to. And the people that we have on the ground looking out for them is, is all the difference in the world. They're more important in some cases than the doctor or the dentist or the behavioral health therapist that sees them.
Well, you know, because I got to tell you, I look at some of the medical facilities, hospitals, and in my own, my own opinion, they are making a lot of money. So I find it hard to believe that suddenly we can't afford healthcare in Little Southbridge. Now, I know that Counselor Adams has said to me, he reached out to me and said, that we have offered to help you stay in this, in Southbridge with ARPA funds. And it seems to me, what you've been telling us is that it's not the money, because you're, you're bringing these people to Worcester, you're providing rideshare to people, so it's just the lease that, maybe it's too high for you, I don't know. But if we are offering you ARPA money to stay here in Southbridge, I just don't understand why you wouldn't, even if it lasted us another year. Well, that's another year that some of these people in town could use medical assistance here in Southbridge. So I don't really quite understand why you can't keep, stay here in Southbridge, even if it's for a little bit longer. That's what it comes down, the bottom line is, we need you to stay in Southbridge, and that's all. That's all. Thank you.
Can I, can I just point a, point a clarification, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Real quick. That was one of the options when we sat down at, in Worcester and in RMG, that the town manager and I had discussed about utilizing, try to find a way, not only through RMG, Harrington Hospital, but the municipality side, to help offset those costs. But I will state, once the lease has been terminated for December 1st, people are looking for other jobs at that point in time.
We, we have struggled for eight years now, I think, with an interim plan and half measures. We are unwilling to do that because that doesn't serve the larger good. We are committed to doing it right, to returning with a, a model that is sustainable and that frankly delivers the care that this community deserves. And we are thrilled to have the conversation about what partnership could look like and what investments could help support that. And there are a number of short-term options that we wish to explore as well. I made the hard call on behalf, and my board made the hard call, looking at an organization that was in trouble, that served 33,000 people in the region, and said, we need to make a, a choice, we need to regroup, and then we can rebuild. And so I, I, I hear you're upset. And I am sorry. And let's work together to turn this around.
Thank you. Counselor Lozo.
I'm sitting here and I'm stunned. One, I respect your passion for what you do, helping people. This is why we run for council, we try to better our community, better the, the services. But when you're talking about the services that you are providing, I do understand how the government works on the state and federal level with subsidies and, and different things that help these programs for people that, that cannot get that care. And I'm a firm believer that all humans deserve healthcare. There's a passionate side to me and there's a business side to me. I really feel terrible that you're leaving. But at the same time, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not liking the final outcome. The only thing I could say is, if there's ever a time that the plan, the financing or something is that you can come back, I'm sure that this council would be with open arms. If there's something, because I know how this works in government, sometimes the pendulum swings one way, and then it swings back, and all of a sudden, there's opportunity to do something. If that ever comes full turn, I hope I'm sitting in this chair. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the lease is gone, the commitment remains.
Dr. Powers, I don't want you to feel left out. Do you have anything you'd like to contribute to the discussion this evening?
Yeah, should I say anything? Just, I'll be ready first of all. Is there anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel, Mr. Adams, and the town counselors for putting this on the agenda and fostering a dialogue that I think was somewhat lacking initially. I would also like to thank the Family Health Center of Worcester for the care they've provided to the members of our community. For the past several years. And while I'm somewhat comforted by Mr. Reddy's plan that he articulated tonight with regard to the rideshare and continuation of care, I would challenge him and his board to formally communicate that to the, all of the patients that they care for, as well as our hospital leadership, to publicize this in various forums. I mean, we all know communication is key. If we have patients on, of that medical center who are family members of this very council who really don't even know yet that this is happening, that's a huge problem. There is certainly a bit of a disparity in the number of patients I've heard that may be involved here, somewhere between 1,100 and 1,600, which is a 500 patient difference. And that's an important number, that's big. And while I can appreciate, it can be somewhat difficult to precisely say how many patients are in a panel, you're certainly going to be better off over-communicating. And even if those 500 patients don't even go to the medical center anymore, at least they get a letter to know what's going on. And the more people in the community know this, the better. I mean, on your website, there's nothing about this plan on your website. I looked just today. I think that it'll be important for not only our leadership, but our medical staff to be aware of this, because these patients, even in the best of times, they're physically here, they're still going to be utilizing our facilities. And if we have no idea what the process is, we're not going to be able to help them along, which they're certainly going to need help. So I think communication is key here, and we have to, you know, our, our primary concern is the welfare of these patients. And we want to do everything we can for these patients to avoid any sense of feeling or experiencing abandonment in the process, which is a huge risk. So again, we welcome the opportunity to work with you and collaborate and openly communicate. Just again, ask that you do your best to do so, and we will be active partners. Thank you.
Very good. Would you like to speak on this issue?
George Shania Truysarav. I want to thank Counselor Adams for making the community aware of this issue that is happening to these people that utilize the facility. What's not being said here tonight is the fact that, yes, they're going to take the people on in Green Ave, in Worcester. It's 1,100 or 1,600 more people that are going to a facility that potentially is going to be overwhelmed with adding our community. Now, nobody's talking about Webster facility. I believe the Webster facility is closed. So those people are going to be offered the opportunity, I'm sure, to go to Worcester and be utilized there. Since Counselor Adams brought this forward, the scuttlebutt within the elderly community that I'm friendly with is that, number one, once it's gone, and most likely, it's gone. We know that as political people, that when you look to eliminate something, very rarely it comes back. The people out there that utilize the services are low-income, poor people, elderly, with very limited income, with a little bit of insurance, no insurance. I'm very lucky that I, my former employer has provided an insurance benefit that allows me the opportunity to go anywhere. When I first moved back here to Southbridge from Florida last November, I called my family doctor, they wouldn't take me, because they were too, they weren't taking new patients. Took me three months to find a physician to take me back. Took me a couple of months to get a cardiologist to deal with my heart issue. Can you imagine what these 1,100 people are going to have to do with no money? The other concern that they have is that they're able to utilize that facility here in Southbridge, take a couple hours off from work, and go be seen and go back to work. That's not going to happen going to Worcester. It's going to be an all-day venture. So what's going to happen? People that really need this service aren't going to utilize it. And what are they going to do? They're going to go to Harrington Hospital that is overwhelmed now for treatment. You go to the emergency room on any busy day, you're sitting there for hours. You have patients that sit in the emergency room for days in a bed because there's no room for the bed. Just see how many people in your family that utilizes healthcare that are shipped to Worcester because they can't provide what they have. The most disappointing fact of these people leaving this community the way they are is the fact they failed to go to the most important people-served leadership. And that was you as counselors, going to you and saying, what, what could you do to help back in July or before July? This just did not happen overnight. This has been a long time coming. And I take it that they didn't come to any of yous and ask for help. They just decided December, we're gone. And had if it wasn't for Counselor Adams informing the people out there, they would have been gone, and we would have known nothing about it. The city of Worcester gave $9 million, I believe, I, I've heard through newspapers and that, to assist them. I'm sure this community would have done something to service those poor people that aren't going to have it. So when those 1,100 or 1,600, I believe 1,100, families 1,600 people are gone, they're gone. And our healthcare system in this community and in the tri-community is going to be overtaxed and are not going to be able to serve the people the way they should. A struggle now. I can remember years ago, we couldn't get doctors to deliver babies because of the high cost of insurance. We didn't have orthopedic surgeons come into town because of the high cost of surgeons of insurance. Harrington stepped up to the plate, they formulated, I believe it's called Physician Services, was able to bring those services back to the community. But this here, to the average person that utilizes it, they're poor people, they're low-income, probably somewhat less educated than the average person out there, not knowing how to be able to make the system work for them. They're going to pay the price. And ultimately, by paying that price, us as a community are going to pay dearly for it, dearly for it. Like I said, it's just not 1,100 people here in Southbridge, it's the added people in Webster, all going to Green Street in Worcester to be serviced by a facility. I didn't hear the gentleman say anything about expanding that facility to take on these additional people. So just imagine taking your mother, Counselor Rivas, taking your mother there on a Thursday morning at nine o'clock and probably leaving the city late in the afternoon. How about when you get there and they decide to cancel the appointment because they're overbooked? I mean, there was no talk about those kind of things. I think- I mean, there was no talk about those kind of things. I think it's important, you as the leaders of our community, is to voice your objections to the way that this happened and write to your higher-ups and tell them the dissatisfaction that you have with this organization. You can say you feel sorry here, but just remember, it's 1,100 people of your community, the 1,100 people that are not serviced like the average person here. They're poor people. And I hope you consider that as your deliberations go on about this. And I always said, once you take something away, it's gone. We've sat here way too often and listened, oh, we'll bring it back, and it's gone. Just remember those 1,100 people. We complain about people sleeping out on park benches now. We complain about waiting in the emergency room now. Watch what's going to happen come December 1st. Thank you for allowing me the time to talk.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road, Southbridge. As I was listening to this, two things occurred to me. One, we are an environmental justice town, which nobody seemed to bring up. So there's lots of illnesses here. There's lots of asthma. And Harrington has, has kind of bailed on us for obstetrics and mental health and things like that. So now there's another thing leaving. And I don't know if I heard this correctly, but they said they texted the people, "I feel the love." At least a letter, if somebody didn't understand it, they could bring it to somebody and say, "Hey, look at this." But seriously, a text? That's lame. But we've got to think of how we're an environmental justice town and, and think of our, our citizens. Shipping them to Worcester is not the solution. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I'm glad to hear the presentation tonight. I'm glad to see the council is concerned. This is one of the important safety nets that we have within our community for our people. I also see this as an opportunity. If the lease is up in December, by the sounds of it, this fitting organization serving 1,600 people have been trying to do it out of a couple of apartments in houses. I think this is a great opportunity for the health network to come back into town, into a larger professional commercial area, because it seems like they've never really been able to supply the need of their patients because of the circumstances they were in. So I certainly hope the council will continue their effort to bring this service back to town in a more appropriate location, where more people would actually take advantage of it. Thank you.
Hi there, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. As a member of the Community Government Relations Board at the hospital, we did discuss this a month or so ago, and it's been ongoing. I just, a few things, you know, it's, it's a sad thing, definitely. It's a doom and gloom, you know, they're moving out of town and they're servicing a lot of people. I just want to be clear, the hospital itself, I know Dr. Powers spoke, but I didn't hear him mention, you know, they're constantly looking to replace physicians. One of the things, you can all sit up there and say, oh my, this is a terrible thing, and it is, but getting people to service the people is part of this problem. It's not just, I don't believe, the location and all these other things. It's just the lack of, the lack of doctors, lack of nurse practitioners, lack of all these things, which is why you can't get an appointment. Even the most educated person sometimes can't get a doctor because of the, the lack of that here in our country, all over the world. And that's the reality of it. So the hospital continues to interview and bring on new people as much as they can. As you said, the Physician Services Team, you know, the administration works really hard to increase that, and they are working on numbers. Knowing this was an imminent situation, they've been actively, even more urgently, seeking to try to replace and to try to be able to provide for the people that are falling through the cracks. I just think unfortunately, it's, it's one of those of the world in general, you know, we have difficulty getting medical professional help to service everybody who needs it. Not to say you stop trying, but certainly it's a reality. So we can second guess and be concerned, you know, that clearly they weren't being able to do what they needed to do financially. So they've retracted and they're going to try to provide it in a more central location, but still try to provide it. So I just wanted to let you know that on behalf of Harrington, that, you know, they continue to seek out and try to provide for these patients that are going to be left without. And they're not all, there, I have family members who have physicians that this was there. It's not just low-income and, and those who don't have means. There are many, many people who are being, having to make a choice now of finding a provider or going to Worcester. Many people, many different walks of life, not just one. But yes, sadly, those who have the most difficulties will, it will continue to be difficult for them. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of want to close this out if possible at this point. But the CEO of Renaissance Medical Group did send me a, a letter today, asked me to read it on behalf of his organization to the town council. To the town council of Southbridge, this statement is in relation to the closing of the Family Health Center in Southbridge. As the CEO of Renaissance Medical Group, I have great concerns about the gap that the closing will leave in our town. The COVID-19 pandemic created a crisis in the medical field. As a result, we have been faced with the challenges of overworked providers and therefore a lack of providers and support staff, not to mention the struggle each of us are facing with what is known as the Great Resignation. Family Health Center plays a vital role in the community. They serve as a town. We have minimal resources as it is and cannot afford to lose any that we currently have. The closing of the Family Health Center will leave approximately 1,600 patients without providers in this immediate area. This creates a bit of crisis since the already existing facilities that offer primary care are, are at the capacity. There have been comments made concerning family health, proposing that patients will be able to continue care in Worcester in person and/or via telehealth. As a CEO of medical facility, I can tell you that this cannot be an option for multiple reasons. For one, many Southbridge residents cannot access a constant mode of public transportation, so going into Worcester is going to be very difficult and for some, impossible. Family Health Center provides care for some of the most vulnerable populations, and this plan is assuming people will have access to adequate technology and reliable transportation. I can tell you from personal experience, from being in the Southbridge area for most of my life, creating a company here and working here, that this is not the case for many. In the case that the patient is able to establish and access transportation and technology to attend to their healthcare needs in Worcester, it is my understanding from my work in Worcester that they have an already strained and limited system. For example, reports state that EMK, Edward M. Kennedy Health Center, has seen an increase in calls for referrals. Other family care providers in the area are maxed out. All of this leaves us with a crisis. The reality we face is that patients will fall through the cracks, risk decline, I'm sorry, and risk declines in their health, ultimately putting them in the ER of our local hospital, being UMass Harrington. All of this is also happening in the middle of the flu season, the current uptick in COVID and the rise of RSV. As a leader in the medical field, I extended my assistance to the CEO of Family Health, but there was no follow-through. I could no longer wait. We have a responsibility to the people of this community. Healthcare is a necessity and not a, not a luxury. I cannot sit back and do nothing. I will continue to work with local elected officials and the community leaders on a plan concerning how we can come together to make sure that the people of Southbridge are not left abandoned and their healthcare needs unattended. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Feel free to reach out to me at any time. We at RMG are proud to be part of the, this community and are here to serve and do all we can for the benefit of the people of Southbridge. Sincerely, Izuzu Suarez, CEO Renaissance Medical Group. And just, Mr. Chair, I just want to add real quick is that the town, from day one of us finding, first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Rivera from the city of Worcester who informed me right away about two days after the article on September 9th was published. I want to thank her for informing us as quickly as possible, and then we jumped on top of that as fast as we could. I do want to thank, again, Mr. Brady for coming down here to speak tonight and give us a presentation. I do thank all that have spoken, but the biggest thing here, in the Marine Corps, we, commanders would lose trust and confidence in their subordinate commands, and they'd automatically be relieved for cause. And my concern here is this community, or at least myself at this point in time, has lost trust and confidence in the Family Health Center of Worcester. I, I'm hoping that it will always come back. I have an open mind, but at this point in time, there has been a lot of communication. I have communicated with Mr. Brady. There has not been, has not been sent back to me as I, I thought it would, being the CEO of a company. Again, I'm not trying to lambast everybody, everybody mistakes, but I think the key word tonight was communication and the lack thereof. So that's all I have to speak. Mr. Chair, again, I thank everybody for speaking tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to offer my thanks to Mr. Brady and to his compatriots for being here this evening and informing the town about what's going on. You heard four citizens come forward expressing their concerns. They're just a small microcosm of, of what we're hearing from the town itself. You've also heard the concerns that the council members have. And we hope that moving forward, you'll be here again in short order with an update and that there'll be able to be some services provided in town or some future plan in place to, to assure us that our students are not, our students, that our citizens are not being left behind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay. We go to item number eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that would like to come forward to speak to an issue not on the agenda for this evening?
Hi there, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. I am here tonight as part of Southbridge Holiday Visions, which most of us are familiar with. I would like to say a great big thank you to those who came out this weekend. Luckily, it was the most, I think it was the record warmth weekend for us. We've never just had it this warm. So it was really great. We were able to get just about everything we wanted to do up on Saturday and Sunday. And I point out that we actually even had volunteers from Brookfield and Sturbridge. So I'd really like more volunteers from Southbridge. But we appreciate those who did come out and help us. It was a great effort by all. I also want to point out Subway of Southbridge. Mr. Patel provided us with lunch on Saturday. We thank him and his crew kindly for that. It's really nice to be able to provide a little bit of substance for these workers because we are moving a lot of heavy items and we get hungry. And also a big thank you, a shout out to Brenda LaCarre, owner of Steve's Collision, along with her employee Jason, who, again, I think it's our third year where they've donated a Penske truck, which is very, very helpful in moving all the product out onto the streets. So that brings me to the event. Just want to make note, the Parade and Tree Lighting Event is Saturday, November 26th. If you plan to participate in the parade, we ask that you get in touch with us and register first. We need to have some type of idea of how many participants we will have. We are getting great interest this year. We've had quite a few emails already. And that would be how you would contact us. Email us at southbridgeholidayvisions@yahoo.com. Let us know who you are, your contact information, and what type of float or lit vehicle that you plan to participate with. We, and then we'll send you more general information about that. Let's see, the parade will kick off at 6:00 PM from the Southbridge Conference Center parking lot, as we did the last couple of years. That's worked out really well, and we thank the Conference Center for letting us use their space. From there, it will take its course mechanic in Charlton and Central and down Main Street, back to the Common where Santa will hang out with the kids, for those who want to. I'm going to mention the Common event. There will be live music again from Brian Kearsley. There will be the Zeppelin Lamas and, of course, Santa. All those items are provided by the Southbridge Council, Cultural Council, the Southbridge Cultural Council, which is funded and supported by the Mass Cultural Council, which is a state agency. We must give credit where credit is due. But we also will have cocoa and cookies again from the Conference Center. We will have, Bill Belanger and the Masons will provide food at cost, for a cost, of course. We also point out that if you want information about this, don't call the town manager's office. He does not have the information. The information is gathered at our Facebook page, Southbridge Holiday Visions. You can certainly just look on that, and that will have phone numbers, emails, all the contact information for you, and the, the most updated information on the event. If you plan to be on the Common, we have had a few groups in the past who have wanted to hand things out. We have our vendor who does food. You must contact us and let us know. Please don't just show up and think you can sell things at our event. While it's on public property, it's a permitted event, and there are rules that we follow for the town, and thereby you would have to follow as well. So if you show up, which did happen last year with a vendor, and then people were concerned about the price of things this vendor sold, but we did not give this vendor permission. If somebody does that, we will ask you to leave. So I'm just trying to get you to follow the rules. Please contact us. We certainly will be happy to talk with anybody who has any questions. We look forward to a really fun event again, and we hope that you will all make it for that evening. We could use some volunteers. So again, if you would like to participate by volunteering a few hours of your time that evening for the parade setup or for the cocoa and cookie handout or, or something, anything, we could use a few volunteers. So feel free to reach out to me. We'll post my phone number probably if capable, will do that for us when I'm speaking, 508-277-4494. They've got a way with magic when they do this. And also, one other thing that's not as good, I would like to really show my anger at the people who stole three items on Saturday evening. It's happened again. It happened last year. And this year, in front of Walgreens, we had two items stolen, gingerbread and an elf, and also at Notre Dame, a gingerbread. So we just want you to know there are cameras everywhere in this community, and you will be found. The police know, and you will be found. So if anybody has any information about this, please let us know. If items are returned, I guess we could let it pass as just bad behavior. But items were up and taken after five o'clock on Saturday evening, and we noticed that on Sunday morning. So if anyone has information, contact me. Otherwise, you know, bah humbug to you who thinks you can steal, by the way, town property. So you have stolen from a municipality that is government property, which puts you at higher risk for being prosecuted. And that's, that's the story for tonight. Thank you for your attention, and I hope to see everybody on November 26th at our Parade and Tree Lighting Event.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council? On an item not on this evening's agenda. Very good. Moving along. Agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Michelle Barnes to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective November 7th, 2022 to November 6th, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics. Second, Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Michelle reached out to me here a few months ago, looking to participate within the town itself. Gave her multiple options as far as the boards and committees were concerned. She picked a few of them, and we're starting off with this one, her, her background as loan officer, real estate agent, quite a few other things. Her resume is pretty impressive. She was voted on unanimously by the planning and development. I do want to make a motion to amend this, this though, because it, the November 6th, the end date should be June 30th of 2025.
That's correct. We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Motion.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. So it's amended to June 30, 2025. That was a clerical error that was noticed by the town clerk. Thank you, Matty, for picking up on that. I'll also head it off and say that it does apply to items number 10 and 11 as well. Not a problem, but we're just, we're following the advice of the town clerk, which is always good advice. So thank you. Mr. Manager.
Just with regard to this specific agenda item, as well as the next two, I just want to make the council aware, they know from subcommittee. I did reach out and interview each one of these individuals via telephone to gauge their interest and their level of acumen for the appropriate committee, and each and every one of them were more than qualified, and that's why they've been advanced through subcommittee, to you folks to see.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Kathleen Russell to the non-resident position within the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective November 7th, 2022, through November 6th, 2025, pending successful completion of state ethics.
Second.
Yes, I'll take an amendment. Do I have a motion and a second on the amendment? Thank you, Mr. Adams. Counselor Adams, second. Counselor Steves, thank you. All those in favor of a similar change? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Any discussion on the appointment? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just Kathleen is now running the tri-community family branch YMCA. So she reached out to the town manager. Town manager is interviewed, is unanimous across the board for the Plan and Development Subcommittee. Thank you.
Very good. Sorry about that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 11. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jennifer Boilard to the state vacancy on the Southbridge Housing Authority for a five-year term effective November 7th, 2022, through November 6th, 2027. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was asked to be brought to the PND instead of EHS. I kindly accepted, and Jennifer will be filling the vacancy over at the Housing Authority. I believe this is, yeah, this is state vacancy that they've been looking for for quite some time. Unanimous of all present.
Very good. I'll take an amendment to modify the date.
Motion. Second.
Thank you, Counselors Lazo and Adams. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Any further discussion on the appointment? Counselor Steves.
Just a quick question. I thought Ms. Boilard was elected to that board, wasn't she? A year or two ago?
She currently sits on, through you, Mr. Jay, she currently sits on the Housing Authority, but this is to fill the state vacancy, and if she were to assume this position, then we could open up that other one. So the state normally, the governor has an appointment, is my understanding, to every housing authority. That, when that person left, the state has six months after notification to fill it. It didn't get filled, so we're seeking to fill it.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay.
Any further discussion? Counsel Lazo? Nope. All set? Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 12. Announce Trash Committee members. Vote to confirm the council chairperson's appointments of the following members to the ad hoc Trash Committee. I'd like to appoint the following people. Counselor Michael Marketti, Chair. Counselor Gus Steves. Health Inspector Daniel Boasioch. Citizen Member Kevin Buxton. Citizen Member Steve Gregoire. Citizen Member Mark Latoy. And Citizen Member Kathleen Grenier.
Second.
Thank you. I'd also like to take a motion at the last second, last-minute meeting by the Board of Health. Mr. Daniel Grabowski was appointed as the Board of Health Representative to the Committee, and I'd like to add his name to this amendment, to this agenda. Thank you, Counselors Adams and Lazo. Any discussion on the amendment?
No, I won't.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Any discussion on the amended agenda item? Counsel Lazo.
Does anybody know who Kevin Buxton is? Kevin Buxton, it's the one I didn't know out of the list.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd appreciate it if the town manager and Ms. Smith contact Ms. Congdon and set up a time for a possible meeting and an agenda that we could get started on this as soon as possible. And I'd also like to point out that the council did vote at the January 10th council meeting to approve a contract curbside service option for the town. So as far as I'm concerned, our charge will be to recommend different options on how to pay for the service. Residents want continued curbside garbage collection. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Marketti, Counselor Marketti beat me to the punch. I was going to say that Ms. Smith and I exchanged emails with Ms. Congdon today to say, when are we meeting next? And she said she wanted to know when the committee was appointed so we could get together with the committee. So I will notify her in the morning. I will loop you in, and we'll get going pursuant to what you indicated about the charge. Ms. Smith, just by way of an update, both of us are working on the RFP right now for the curbside collection. I attended an event about two, three weeks ago on that, and I've been working with some other towns to get some input on that, including tipping. So we're working, and we can bring that information to the committee when we first meet, so I'll get back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you, folks. Item number 13. Vote to approve Change Order Number One to JAM Corporations for $1,228.47 funded by the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities PAC Grant and Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, fiscal year 21, and extend the contract end date to May 1st, 2023, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is voted on unanimously in favor of the Change Order Number One. Planning Development did have a Change Order Number Two that we did approve the other evening, right after the PND, but this is Change Order Number One, and that was also
Any discussion? Counsel Steves.
Yeah, I don't think that was in our packet, and I unfortunately didn't get to that meeting, so. Because the memo we have in our packet is for $12,508,47.
You just need to subtract, Ms. Dean is here, but it would be to subtract $11,000 from that total amount. The Change Order Two that was dealt with at the special council meeting on Wednesday was for the $11,000 for the Change Order for the concrete, so that's not on the table. So it would need to, your memo would need to be amended to $1,200.
Yeah, I didn't get to that meeting, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marketti.
Well, I don't want to speak for Ms. Dean, but I think on page two of this document, it lays out the total value of the Change Order. So I think that's what this is about. Thank you.
Yeah, I see.
Ms. Dean.
I owed you a memo that was supposed to be updated with the changes. I've been out severely sick since our subcommittee meeting on Wednesday night. I apologize. I came in today strictly for the airport master plan meeting and town council, but otherwise I have fallen behind on some of my to-dos, and one of them was to get you an updated memo. I apologize.
Very good.
We were going to forgive her, that's the first time.
Any further discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14. Vote to accept the proposal and enter into an agreement with BSC Group to design Quinnebog Valley Rail Trail for $352,000 using Mass Trails grant funds and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, November 2nd, PND. Unanimous of all present.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is seven to one. Counselor Marketti against. Motion passes.
Don't tell me that's Buxton.
Is that for Counsel Marketti or for us?
Item number 15. Vote to approve the request for a timely expenditure waiver from Department of Housing and Community Development for the CDBG fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 23 opportunity and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Again, the PND on the 2nd of November. Unanimous of all present.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16. Vote to allow the Economic Development and Planning Department to accept the lowest quote to furnish and install two awnings at 300 Main Street for not more than $10,814, pending approval from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
We had a lively discussion that evening on this agenda item, and it was voted unanimously of all present to recommend to the town council. There was an opposition of, or a lively discussion of the color of the awning, but I think we got past that and we moved forward. Thank you.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is seven to one. Counselor Marketti against. The motion passes. Item number 17. Vote to allow the Economic Development and Planning Department to accept the lowest quote to furnish and install one awning at 53 Central Street for not more than $8,543.46 and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Again, unanimous of all present, recommended in favor.
Any discussion? Counsel Steves.
Just a clarification. I believe these are both coming from CDBG funds, right?
Correct. CDBG fiscal year 19 to finish up the grant.
Anything further? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? The vote is seven to one. Counselor Marketti against. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 18. Vote to approve the Department of Public Works' request to declare surplus on and dispose of the following items: a plotter printer and a Ford Ranger. Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was approved five to zero at the subcommittee. Thank you.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 19. Vote to approve transfer for $150 from account number 600440-520100 Sewer R&amp;M to account number 600440-530700 Testing and Evaluation to provide funding for increased sewer testing fees and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was approved five to zero.
Very good. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 21. Vote to approve a transfer for $378.94 from account number 001111-511700 Salaries and Wages to account number 001111-542000 Office Supplies to purchase a laptop for the recording clerk and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Steves.
Yeah, we voted that unanimously at our last meeting. About the bill of a discussion, the whole issue, as you probably already know, is that previously we had been using Mary's own computer, and it just made sense to have somebody. Adriana brought the proposal forward, saying that the issue really was a whole bunch of things, security and a whole bunch of issues that we deal with, like concession stuff. There really should be on a town-owned computer as opposed to her personal computer, so. So I'm assuming that we will vote for this, so you'll end up not having to use yours.
Do I get a mouse, too?
Maybe, yes.
Very good. Further discussion? Counselor Marketti.
I'm sorry. Just a clarification. Did we vote on agenda item number 20?
We skipped over it.
You skipped one?
Yep.
I apologize.
Well, we can just switch them around. That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. My mistake. Any further discussion on 21? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present for number 21. Item number 20. My eyes are working too fast. Vote to approve transfer for $272.20 from project number 68100 DPW Ride Share Search Hodge to account number 001499-553300 DPW Road Materials and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was again five to zero in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Just for the people that are here in the audience or those that are at home, this money that we are transferring is the share of monies that are returned to the town from the Department of Public Utilities. When people use ride-sharing services such as Uber or Lyft, and they originate in our community, we do get a small portion of each ride. There was over 2,700 rides last year. Accordingly, we received $272 from the state as our portion of the fee assessed on those rides, and that money we then have to use for some type of road repair or improvement. So that's the nature of this transfer.
Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 22. Vote to approve the MIA Health Benefits Trust renewal proposal for January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023. Blue Medicare rates, Blue Medicare RX rates based on continuing the current enrollment level and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Steves.
Yeah, we approved this unanimously. Adriana mentioned that the increase is only 1.53%, which is pretty comparable to last year. And George out there mentioned that he was quite happy with the current medics program, so having been, you mentioned that it only, you were only paying $9 in co-pays, which is pretty low considering everything you're talking about, so.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 23. Vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and Cook &amp; Company Insurance Services Incorporated to provide a dedicated health plan management consultant to the town in the amount of $9,800 per year, effective September 1, 2022, through August 31, 2023, renewable for two additional years at the sole discretion of the town, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Counsel Steves.
We also approved that unanimously. The manager mentioned that he wanted to take an extra year so that we could have some time to do some more research and compare what other providers out there might be and what they can do for us.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of VHB, Ty &amp; Bond, CHA, and Haley Ward Incorporated as interim engineers for on-call services. And authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Very good. Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved five to zero. Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Again, those in the audience and those at home who may want to understand why we're appointing four different interim engineers, as many of you may know with the departure of Mr. DeJardin, who is our engineer, we have an interim DPW director that's coming in while we're interviewing candidates and we do not have a town engineer. So in order to ensure that we could have engineering services at any given time to assist us with a project and where we're already utilizing some of these firms for some of the projects ongoing, we wanted to have a pool of qualified engineers at our disposal so that if we needed to have someone to do a peer review or help us with a project, we would have certain people at our disposal. And these four, we sent out an RFQ. They've all responded. They are qualified and this will allow our interim DPW director to call upon any one of them as he sees fit to provide those services.
Any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-five, vote to enter into executive session A pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21.3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining regarding all collective bargaining units, which if discussed in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. Counsel will return to open session. And B pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21.6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and I so do declare.
I was, with the indulgence of the counsel, the segue from my last comment about our interim engineer, HR and I have been trying to talk to some candidates about coming in as a potential DPW director. And again, I apologize for my voice, but there has been a question raised about whether or not to enter into a contract with one of these individuals. So what I would ask, in the interest of time, we do not have, as I said, a full-time DPW director, and this came up this evening in a conversation with one of the candidates, is whether or not the counsel would allow me to ask for item number C pursuant to Mass General Law 38, Section 21, number two, to conduct strategy negotiations for a potential contract with a non-union personnel member to wit a DPW director. So I wanted to have that conversation just so I could know if I continued discussions with some of these candidates, what the counsel's pleasure was. Sorry for the voice.
So move.
Second.
All right. We're asking to suspend the rules to add a third section to agenda item number twenty-five, letter C that the town manager just read.
To just discuss a strategy with regard to potential negotiations of contract with a DPW candidate. It's really a high-level question that I have with the counsel. I don't have a particular name. It's just a question that's been presented to me that I want to discuss with you folks.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to suspend the rules and add that agenda 25C item. Any discussion on that suspension? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is six to two. The motion passes.
I'm sorry. Who voted in opposition?
I'm sorry?
Who voted in opposition? I didn't see it.
Counselors Montigny and Lazo.
Marketti and Lazo, right?
Montigny and Lazo.
I'm sorry. I thought you raised your hand.
Okay. We now have a motion to go into executive session. Roll call.
Was it a motion? To go into executive session? I don't remember.
I made a motion.
Yeah. I don't think it was a motion to go into executive session.
I made a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, you did? Okay.
And who seconded that?
I did.
I did. I made it. He seconded.
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Lazo.
I thought that they voted and seconded to amend the executive session.
I moved to, actually both.
Okay.
I don't know. I guess he seconded both as well.
All right.
I didn't hear him second. I didn't hear him second going after it.
Very good. Roll call. Sue.
Oh.
Roll call, please.
Chair Daniel?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes. Very good. We're going into executive session and we will return to open session. Good evening and welcome back. We are now in open session. We'll move on to agenda item number twenty-six, vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Southbridge and Mass COP Local 153, Southbridge Police Association, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So move.
So move.
I'm first.
I second.
Thank you.
I made the motion.
Very good. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Okay. All the motion passes. There is a contract. Okay. Item number twenty-seven, vote to approve and fund an order of taking of interests in real property located in the Town of Southbridge for municipal purposes pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 79. Chapter 79 and any and every other power and authority hereunto enabling and hereby deem that public necessity and convenience require that it should take on behalf of the town for general municipal purposes, including but not limited to a fire station, the fee in, and to the parcels of land with any improvements thereon located at 0 Worcester Street, Assessors Lot Number 030-055-00001, Assessors Lot 030-056-00001, and Assessors Lot 030-057-00001, 129 Worcester Street, Assessors Lot 030-059-00001, Assessors Lot 030-060-00001, Assessors Lot 030-064-00001, and Assessors Lot 030-065-00001, 17 Snow Street, Assessors Lot 030-66-00001, and 23 to 27 Snow Street, Assessors Lot 030-067-00001, Southbridge, Massachusetts, and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Lazo, a second by, we don't need a motion here.
He's got to read that whole.
All right. Before we have the motion, this has to be added on.
In order to acquire property located at 0 Worcester Street, 129 Worcester Street, 23 Tech, 27 Snow Street, 17 Snow Street, Southbridge for the purpose of a fire station and to authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents to effectuate an acquisition bid ordered by the town council of the Town of Southbridge, assembled and by the authority of the same as follows, whereas Zach Hill Realty LLC, or Zach Gill Realty, owns certain property located at 0 Worcester Street and 129 Worcester Street, Southbridge, described in deeds recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 34188, Page 193, and Book 40097, Page 3, and further identified as Assessors Lot 030-TAC-055-TAC-0001, Assessors Lot 030-TAC-056-TAC-00001, Assessors Lot 030-TAC-057-TAC-00001, which is 0 Worcester Street, Assessors Lot 030-TAC-059-TAC-0001, Assessors Lot 030-TAC-060-TAC-00001, Assessors Lot 030-TAC-064-TAC-00001, and Assessors Lot 030-TAC-065-TAC-0001, 129 Worcester Street, and Zach Hill Realty property. And whereas Jason, and I'm going to mess this name up.
Petrazak.
Petrazak? Petrazak owns certain property located at 23 through 27 Snow Street, Southbridge, described in the deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 462, I'm sorry, 46267, Page 35, and further identified as Assessors Lot 030-TAC-067-TAC-00001, the Petrazak property. And whereas Linda M. Fredette, together with Zach Hill Realty and Petrazak, the owners, owns certain property located at 17 Snow Street, Southbridge, described in a deed recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Book 5993, Page 173, and further identified as Assessors Lot 030-TAC-066-TAC-00001, the Fredette property together with the Zach Hill Realty property and the Petrazak property and the properties. And whereas the town has reached agreement with the owners as to the compensation to be paid to acquire the properties, now therefore the town council votes as follows, one, to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise the Zach Hill Realty property for the sum of $1,525,000 on the terms and conditions as negotiated by the town manager, two, to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise the Petrazak property for the sum of $467,250 on the terms and conditions as negotiated by the town manager, three, to acquire by purchase eminent domain or otherwise the Fredette property for the sum of $290,000 on the terms and conditions as negotiated by the town manager, four, to execute an order of taking for the execution of the property as prepared by town council, and five, to authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents reasonably necessary to effectuate the purposes of the order on such terms and conditions as the town manager deems to be the best interest of the town.
So move.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may offer an amendment to add the Adams reading to the main motion?
Very good.
Second.
A second to that. All right. Any discussion on that? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. So we have one long motion. Okay. Very good. We have a motion in a second for the amended, okay, from Counselors Lazo and Counsel Dow. Okay. Very good. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Chair Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Very good. Counsel's form. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of issues. First of all, I did receive the town manager's email about municipal aggregation option on electric rates and I received the response from Counsel Adams. I was just hoping that we could get an update on that. Are we going to go forward with something like that? Is it something we're looking into? Second thing I have is I appreciate an update on the Sacred Heart Church. What's going on with that building? Finally, it has now been 252 days since the town council voted to replace the carpets in the town hall. And I know the town manager informed me that the carpets will be replaced on November 17th through the 19th. I would also like.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, I think.
Okay. I would also like to point out that the vote on February 28th was to replace carpeting in the hallway, town manager's office, the assessor's office, and the town's clerk's office. So I would expect carpeting to be replaced in all the areas that we voted on. One more thing to add to that, I did contact another company who installs carpets in the area and they told me they did not experience any supply chain issues. Finally, I hope everybody can get out and vote tomorrow. No matter who you vote for, it's important that you vote. That's what makes this country great and what makes us free, that we have a right to vote on who we want as our elected officials. So thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Few things, few concerns were brought to me this week, one of which we're trying to fix now with the help of Counselor Adams, but you know, people, there are local people that are trying to do good things in this town for kids, the town, whatever it may be, and they're getting denied at the front level and they have to come ask their elected officials. As someone who's trying to run a fitness program for a gym, looking for a one-hour-a-week space, being told by the school department in the town that they can't, there's nothing they can do for them, but you know, suddenly they make a call to us, we do a little bit of talking, and now there's light at the end of the tunnel for that. I appreciate that that is happening, but I don't appreciate these people getting turned away at the beginning, especially when they're offering to pay to help our youth. There's also another post on Facebook that is still posted now as a public post, so I will read it. I'm not going to say who it's from, but it is a former school employee. It says, "Attention to my Southbridge High School alumni. The 50-year-plus tradition of the Thanksgiving rally is in jeopardy. The admin first tried to end it totally and now is forcing kids to make a literal three-foot poster-sized rally for a skit." If you're not aware, we used to make giant posters for all four classes for the rally ever since before I was in school there. Remember the class unity? We all helped to paint it, mural the sides. Remember real pioneer pride? The administration does not care about town traditions at all. They are thrilled the alumni staff have left or retired early because they can push their own agenda. If you care about traditions that made our time at SHS memorable, I urge you to email these people and remind them what is really important. These kids deserve what we had. They deserve better. Trust me. Please step up now. They provide the email addresses of the director of operations and the receiver. I've heard different things that maybe now, since there was this public outcry on Facebook, that these issues have been fixed. But I do know that I was flooded with messages, especially because I used to work at the school, and there were people telling me that are trying to start, one person is trying to start a restaurant in town that is like, I have no interest in starting a restaurant here anymore after hearing what it's like for the gym person trying to get their gym and for the traditions being taken away. And I went to the Board of Education meeting back in 2016 when they took over the school district and the night before they had a forum at the old high school and I spoke about how it seems like they made up their mind anyway and just please don't kill tradition. One of the people up there told me to write them a letter about it and I did that. Don't kill tradition when you take it over. And now here we are, six, seven years later, we got all this talk about how we're going to have a new governor and how receivership might just disappear soon. And at the final hour, they seem to be wanting to change everything about the Southbridge pioneers. And you know, this whole thing about alumni leaving, now they can push their agenda, I think I just need to make it known here that in Southbridge, having a local candidate and a local skill set is very important to these children, especially the children and definitely for the citizens. You need somebody that cares about Southbridge to work in Southbridge from top to bottom, but most definitely all managers and mid-level managers should take note that it is important when people have ties to Southbridge and want to work for this town and care about this town. Okay? I would describe the behavior of not caring about that skill set as evil. And thank you very much.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
If I may chime in on the same tune, I've been contacted. I don't do Facebook. The only thing I can tell you is, one of my former players approached me and his name's Jose Machado. He runs a CrossFit gym in the Town of Southbridge. And he approached Don Miko, the person from the school district to rent a gym willing to pay for a youth fitness program. He runs out of RMG. a youth fitness program, uh, he runs out of R M G, his, his, uh, his program, um, and Miko said there are no gyms available, so you can't have any space, um, when we built the middle school, and I know that my good friend, Mr. Joe Van Back there, was chairman of the school committee, the whole deal with the community was, it was going to be community schools, to let every walk of life use your buildings, whether it be a music in the auditorium, gymnasiums, fields, when we built the fields up there, it opened up a lot of fields in town for the, for the various organizations, it also opened up the old Southbridge High Gym to be used, not to be mothballed, as that one issue goes by the board, I get a phone call from my organization I spent seventeen years in, Pop Warner, their cheerleaders went to the state finals and they wanted to use a gymnasium to, um, uh, get it a couple extra days, I'm already, Don Miko says, there are no gyms, you can't have any of the gyms, they're all booked, later on to find out that the gyms are not booked, um, when you turn around, some of the stuff's been met with opposition as far as the rallies, when I was a senior at Southbridge High School, we had a poster from the top of the rafters, thirty feet down the wall and ten feet onto the gymnasium floor as a senior class, they're not allowed to do that anymore, I mean, I don't know why, um, there's talk of changing the mascot at Southbridge High School, uh, to move away from the pioneer, um, don't know why that has to happen, the one thing that the pride of the school was, was the school colors, red and white, and the pioneer was the mascot, the Daniel Boone coonskin hat, so as you look at the school district, and you know, when you see something good like Mr. House, the middle school administrator, who is an outstanding performer, one of the rock stars in our school district, you say, I see an array of hope, maybe, just maybe, the hardest school to get an administrator for, and the toughest age group to work with is the middle school, and the guy is doing a knock-down, drag-out, top-notch job. We have sat here, when I was on school committee, we had a level-one high school, we no longer have a level-one high school, we had sixty-five pieces in the band on a Friday night, sixty football players and twenty-four cheerleaders of all walks of life, the field was packed, now we don't have that anymore, it's been deteriorated, the alumni asked to have the alumni game before the Thanksgiving Day game at the field, they said, no, why don't you go have it at Bartlett, last year, there were more people at the alumni game than there were at the Bartlett game, the band parents made a lot of money because they had the concession stands, again, the community, the Southbridge residents, not the carpet baggers that come in for the weekend and change your date, now your Friday night games can't be at seven o'clock, they gotta be at six o'clock, it's more convenient for the out-of-towners to come into the game and then to leave, as I walked down this memory lane of this takeover, and my good friends who have dealt with this state, or whether it be, I'm not, I am not blaming the receiver, because we went through, so many receivers had their shot at our system on deterioration, and this one here continues to deteriorate, when we turn around and start getting serious about approaching our state officials and taking our district back, I hope to God the right governor gets elected, and the right governor fires the commissioner and dissolves the, the, uh, the receivership as they said she would, uh, we'll see what happens, but today, I've got to tell you, this Dean, this, uh, Don Miko is an employee of the Southbridge District by the state that oversees just about everything, and if anybody steps out of line, she reports right to the top, and usually they're removed. If you want to see your Southbridge teachers, you go to Northbridge, they're all there teaching, they left Southbridge Wells and the high school, and they're there, if you want to see, I, I went to a Tantasco football game, saw all the Southbridge football players that are school-choiced out there, that are playing football, on the posters there, I went to the game to watch one of the guys that works as my summer help, outstanding football player, great kid, a Southbridge kid, so you know, when you turn around and you look around, you say, we're going to have a conversation about this, I think the conversations are just about done, if the leadership of this town council, or this town council doesn't provide the leadership, then it's time for some changes at the top, enough is enough, we've been doing nothing but spinning our wheels under state receivership, I see small improvements at best, I see a mass exodus of students, and they're in the surrounding towns, performing at high end, just like the teachers that got removed all of Southbridge School District, so when you looked at it, we cannot run from the truth any longer, I think we need to take a hard look at the approach to the state, thank you.
Very good, Counselor Rubus.
So I had a couple of things, um, I also had questions about the electricity rates, um, as, uh, Counselor Marquetti, um, I know that I had a resident reach out, um, and Counselor Steves and I gave some, uh, recommendations on, uh, resources, and my question to the town manager through the, um, chair is, um, could we provide some of this information online or somewhere where residents can sort of access some of the resources, um, because I suspect that we'll have more residents reaching out as people get concerned, um, about their electricity rates, um, and I know that you'll be looking into the aggregate, you know, uh, option, but in the meantime, like, maybe providing some of the resources to our residents so that they have different options to look at.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I did mention in my announcements, we did put something up effective, uh, November first, um, materials provided to us by National Grid on maybe how someone could get, um, assistance with their bill, if there's other resources that anybody's aware of, I'm happy to take them and put them up there as well, I did send the email that I think Counselor Marquetti referred to, there is a, um, and I put the links into the plan, uh, in the guidance on how to come up with a municipal aggregation plan, um, it starts, I, I put, uh, four bullet points, council would have to vote to ag, create the aggregation program, then we would have to put a plan together, usually within, uh, a consultant, we did it in my last community, and you work with the Department of Energy Resources, um, and you have to work with your constituents when you do that, there has to be, you know, a public hearing essentially for citizen input on that, and then we would have to submit that back to the Department of Public Utilities, it's not a quick fix, and with everything else, there's going to be pros and cons, um, a lot of the towns that are benefiting is because they started it wide, ways back, and they've locked in rates at really low rates, and they've got about a three-year deal, those rates will eventually go up, the downside could be is we start this, and then when we enter into it, we could be locked into rates, could be momentarily cheaper, but it could lock us in for three years, and if the rates come back down, we'd be stuck, so, those are things that we would have to, to, um, look at, the pros and cons, as I said, but what we'll have to do is set up on another meeting if it wants to be, you know, a, an agenda item to vote to initiate that, and then I'll have to find and task somebody with starting the process to go out, we'd have to get a consultant and, um, put together, you know, starting a plan, but it won't be anytime soon, I mean, if people are looking for relief now, we need to direct them to some of those plans, the National Grid that I put up there, and then, um, if anybody else has any ideas, I'm happy to put them on our website so that people can find them, but the, the plan could take probably a couple of months before we could have a plan in place, and then, you know, locking in the rates at that time, we wouldn't know what they would be.
Great, thank you, um, my other question, I, I did see, um, not, maybe a little while ago, um, a posting, um, uh, on Facebook about, uh, a, a resident talking about a program, that they said was funded by the federal government to, um, help multi-unit owners for repairs of their homes, um, and there was some back and forth with other comments about this program sort of going away, um, and residents were asking, you know, some residents didn't know that it existed before, um, so I was curious, um, about that program and, uh, whether we could bring that program back, I don't, you know.
If you could give me the name of the program, I'm happy to look, find out what I can about.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can answer that question, um, that actually came up at the last, at the C D B G hearing, um, with, with Peg, and it was a couple, a couple of residents came down and they were actually raising that exact same question, um, and what was going on is that back in something like two thousand and fifteen, before two thousand and fifteen, the town was tapping, was using some of the C D G, C D B G funds, um, specifically for housing renovations and stuff like that, um, and the way it was set up was that it was in a certain district of town that, that met a variety of, of economic qualifications, and there was some discussion at the last hearing about whether or not it might be legal, and I know Peg said she was going to look into it, and I haven't heard from it since then, um, about whether or not it would be legal to expand it to the entire community based on econ, based on income rather than just a specific district of town, um, but I know that she's looking into that, and I know the general gist of the people that were at that hearing are certainly interested at least in creating or recreating that program for certain districts in town if, if that's what it has to be, um, so it's something that's, as I understand it, it's in process, and I don't know where it stands at the moment, Peg plans on having, recontinuing the public hearing for C D B G sometime in the near future, whenever it gets posted, I don't know what the dates are yet.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Very good, Counselor Steves.
Um, I had a couple of quick things, um, first off, just for people who are outside, it's beautiful weather out there now, and so there's a chance to get out in the woods, but just remember that it's hunting and fishing season, um, so as of, um, well, as of the beginning of October, there are some hunts already going on, um, but right now it is currently archery season, so if you, make sure you go out there with your hunter orange, so that you, you get seen and be careful, um, generally speaking, there shouldn't be too much of an issue, because I go out in the woods all the time, it's not a big issue, but just pay attention, um, and the shotgun season starts on November twenty-eighth, um, it's a bunch of specific animals and specific times, and just check the mass hunting and fishing website, because it's there, um, for details, um, also, I wanted to point out that, um, tomorrow night, although it is election day, um, the Grange, the Dudley Grange at seven P M. is doing a, having a Native American discussion on what's called the Mashune Project, where years ago, back around the turn of the century, um, they found some ancient Native American canoes in the middle of, um, Lake Quinsingham in Worcester, so they're going to talk about the history and the archaeology involving that, um, and also on Wednesday, the Southbridge Historical Society's Frank, uh, the Frank Memorialist coming to the Southbridge Historical Society to talk about history about regarding central mass transportation and other related things, um, on Thursday, um, there's the, one, there's a, uh, Harrington is, as I understand, is hosting a Veterans Day event at the hotel, and then of course you've got the Veterans Day event, our, our town is doing on Friday, and, uh, that's all I have.
Very good, Counselor Dow.
I have nothing at that time, thank you.
Very good, Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just got twenty things to talk about, um, just kidding, reminder, council, the whole meeting is going November fourteenth, uh, we'll talk about the charter review, also, uh, the, oh, as, as Counselor Steve stated, it's going to be at twelve o'clock for the Harrington luncheon for the Veterans Day, that's, uh, November tenth at twelve over at, uh, the Hotel Conference Center, on the eleventh, our, and we've posted this multiple times, we have our Veterans Day ceremony there, right at the World War Memorial Park, should be about forty-five minutes, we have a couple of good speakers, one from the high school as well, also, we have, uh, November twelfth, Green Meadows has a Veterans Day breakfast at nine o'clock in the morning, and the great thing about all these is the fact that this is more than I've ever seen in this town since I've lived here, all these different events, uh, and we, Eastford Road to West Street and all that kind of stuff, so there's a lot of events going on for, for Veterans Day, which I truly appreciate, I also wanted to, uh, thank the town council for being very professional this evening with the, um, uh, the center, uh, who came in to, to give us a presentation, I know where to go from at that point in time, and I appreciate them coming in, also, lastly, I want to wish my Marine Corps a happy two hundred and forty-seventh birthday on November tenth, seventeen seventy-five, two battalions of Marines were formed by the Continental Congress, and, uh, to this, to this day, uh, will be, well, will, will look pretty good for two hundred and forty-seven years old, so have birthday Marines, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Very good.
Uh, discussion on the recent, uh, next meeting date is Monday, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, seven P M., here in the dais.
Item thirty, motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Steves, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.